Okay, welcome everyone. I'm going to call the October 25th, 2021 meeting of the Select Board to order. And so, welcome everyone. Our Chair is in the first order of businesses to call who's present. So Matt Johnson.
Present.
Susan Bates.
Here.
Myself, Linda Escobedo. And that is a quorum, so I think we will proceed. I will, in the absence of our Chair this evening, who's unable to be with us, I would like to nominate a pro temp Chair for the evening, and I nominate Matt Johnson. Do I hear a second?
Second.
All those in favor? Susan?
Aye.
Okay. Matt, are you willing to do that? Thank you. And myself, Linda Escobedo, aye. Alright, Matt, it's all yours.
Alright, thanks very much, Linda. And the next thing that we need is a clerk for this meeting. So I'd like to nominate Susan Bates as their clerk, pro temp for this meeting. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. And and I'll call the roll for this. So Ms. Bates?
Aye.
Ms. Escobedo?
Aye.
And myself, Mr. Johnson, aye. I still do not see Henry. Okay. So now let's go move to the next order of business, which is the consent agenda. So would the clerk please attend to the consent agenda? Willing to read the proclamation if you'd like.
Okay. Move to approve the consent agenda, which includes minutes to approve August 9th, 2021, September 7th, 2021, letter of support for H 1377 and S 868, transfer fee bill to the Joint Committee on Housing. Proclaim November 27th, 2021 as Small Business Saturday. Gift acceptance, middle sex school totaling $75,000 for support of emergency equipment. $50,000 to the Police Department, $25,000 to the Fire Department, and we thank them for the generosity.
Thanks, and more to the proclamation. So the town of Concord Select Board proclaims Small Business Saturday to be November 27th, 2021. And just briefly, because Concord, Massachusetts supports our local businesses that create jobs, boosts our local economy, and preserves our communities. And whereas advocacy groups, as well as public and private organizations across the country, have endorsed the Saturday after Thanksgiving as Small Business Saturday. Now therefore, the Concord Select Board hereby proclaims November 27th, 2021 as Small Business Saturday, and urges the residents of our community and communities across the country to support small businesses and merchants on Small Business Saturday and throughout the year. Okay, so we'll now move to the Town Manager's Report.
Oh, we need a second, don't we on that?
Sorry, we do need to, sorry, to approve that. So I second the consent agenda.
And could I just make an amendment to the minutes for August 9th? I noticed in those minutes, there were two or three places where apparently the Chair had inserted some comments for things to be checked, and those comments did not get removed. So I don't know if we pull the August 9th minutes for later time, or whether
Yeah, I think if we're going to make amendments, we need to pull them from the consent agenda to do that.
Yeah, and we may also need to pull and delay is what I'm trying for.
Yes, okay. So
Remove to approve the consent agenda without the August 9th, 2021 minutes.
Second.
Okay.
So would you like clerk, please call the roll?
Ms. Escobedo?
Aye.
Mr. Johnson?
Aye.
And myself, Ms. Bates, aye.
Okay, thanks very much. And now to the Town Manager's Report.
Hi, good evening, everyone. So there was a printed report that was a compilation of a few weeks' worth of information. I'll go through all of that. Just a few updates on our broadband connect installations, connections. And there's some good information from CMLP about the sort of macroeconomic energy pricing considerations for the winter. So there's that. I did also include a dashboard of COVID cases. It was from the first week of October. I don't have updated numbers from Susan Rask yet, but they've been hovering around that, say between 10 and 20 new cases per week mark for some time now, to the point where we have not had our EOC meeting, our weekly EOCs, because we are in sort of a steady holding pattern. And that's a good news story. That's a positive thing. So the other thing I'll mention that's not on the printed report is that, as we started saying this week, there's going to be some significant rainstorms. They are nor'easters, so not snow, but rain and winds with the possibility for power shortages. So people should make sure to, if there are storm drains in your neighborhood, make sure they're clear. You know, loose ankles in the yards and things like that, because it could get Tuesday and Thursday, there could be significant storm activity. So that's a brief synopsis of what I have in my report. Any questions?
No, thank you.
Yeah. And then for my part, for the Chair's remarks, I just wanted to call the all Board and Committee members attention to a workshop, the Effective Governance Workshop, that will be given by a combination of our Board Chair, Terry Ackerman, Kari Tari, the Town Clerk, as well as Carmen Reese, the Town Moderator, and our IT Director, Jason Bulger, to go through topics of good governance, including meeting guidelines, ethics, open meeting law, and public records compliance, the town meeting process and timeframes, and the cybersecurity issues. So this is really important information for all Town Board and Committee members. I think both those that are experienced, as well as those that are new. So look forward to attending that. And also, I think they're looking into creative recorded modules for those that aren't able to attend on the day. That's Saturday, November 6th, 2021. I do encourage attending, though, the real time, because that gives you a chance to ask questions and interact with others. And then the other is, I would like to congratulate Susan Rask on her retirement and wish her well, and thank her for her years of service. So that takes us to the next topic, which is the special town meeting calendar. No?
No, that's not, I was just gonna note that Susan's gonna be with us through into December.
Oh, yes.
So we'll have her in. Yeah.
Okay. So now on to adopting the special town meeting calendar. And there is a draft calendar that's in our meeting materials. I did have a question about it, which was, you know, there are some TBD dates, and I don't know, can we adopt a calendar that has TBDs in it? So for example, the joint public hearing between the Finance Committee and the Select Board is listed as a TBD, and the Finance Committee report to the printer has a placeholder date of January 1st.
So I had that same question, and I don't know if we were expected to propose some dates for that time period or not. Looking at the holidays at the end of November, it might be logical if it was a Monday that we looked at December 6th. But if it ends up being held on that by the FinCom with the Select Board, it also could be that Thursday, the 9th. So I mean, without knowing anything else, that's one way I looked at it.
Yeah. I mean, I think it seems safest to put it on the same date as a FinCom meeting and just carve out some of the time from it, because it's really just most likely going to be a one-item agenda from a FinCom perspective especially. And so, you know, the hearing could take place in terms of that.
On Monday, December 6th, the Select Board has scheduled a joint meeting with FinCom and the town regarding the Capitol.
Oh, well, then let's add it to that.
And so I thought, well,
Yeah.
it could be the second item for the evening.
Absolutely, or the first. It could be the first because of the public comment in the hearing, and then there. So let's, does everyone else have that? Agree with that?
Yes.
I don't.
Mr. Johnson, I think, sorry, Christine Reynolds is the Chair of FinCom, so I think she's getting her mic. But there was a question about availability for FinCom.
Okay.
Yeah, so I had suggested to carry the 16th of December.
Is, what day of the week is that? Do you know?
That's a Thursday.
Okay.
But what are the other dates you are suggesting now?
We're talking about the 6th?
I can't do it. Well, it's very difficult for me to do it on the 6th. I can't do it.
Okay, because I think we already have a scheduled session on the 6th with FinCom.
No, you don't. For what? No. The planning meeting for Capitol is on the 4th of November.
Oh, okay.
With the Select Board?
With the Select Board and the School Committee. So that's the Capitol Planning Meeting with you two, your two groups. I'm not aware of any other meeting with FinCom on Capitol Planning, and that's the 4th of November.
But that's your meeting with them, is that correct? That's FinCom's meeting?
Yes.
Well, we're scheduled on December 6th to meet
Oh, you have a third meeting?
Yeah, with FinCom and the town.
You're not on my calendar for the 6th, because I'm not available on the 6th.
Okay.
What do people think about the 16th, and is that a viable date, given the rest of the calendar? It does look like it.
The only thing I'm not sure of, and either Carmen may be able to set us straight on this, or Kari, is if we needed to hold a public hearing so many days before another meeting?
Is that for Planning Board that you're asking, for Select Board?
It's for the Finance Committee.
Well, the joint meeting, the hearing.
Hearing, yeah.
Well, if the recommendations are going to be in the Finance Committee report, then that would need to be done prior to that being sent out.
True.
So there isn't really a timeline for the public hearing that the Finance Committee needs to have, that's established anywhere, except that they are obligated to issue a report and make a recommendation to Town Meeting. And obviously, they don't like to do that until they've had the opportunity to hold the public hearing and then have some conversation among themselves, taking into account the public hearing. So you just have to leave them enough time to get that done, and then you have to leave Town Staff enough time to get the Finance Committee report to the printer, back from the printer, and mailed to households.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Carmen. So, Mr. Johnson, that's why the January 1st is a placeholder, because it's driven from the date of the FinCom public hearing.
Right, okay. So I guess it gets back to Cynthia, or Christine, excuse me, as to what lead time do you need, and then what does that, does that have an effect on the date we must hold the hearing?
What is the January 1st date, Matt?
That's the nominal date to send the report to the printer, so that it can be printed in time to be sent out January 10th to address
I mean, yeah, I mean, we only have one item to discuss, right, which is, you know, which is the middle school building. So I don't think it would have a large turnaround. I mean, I don't imagine we're gonna have a big book. We're probably gonna have a page. So I think that's enough time between January's, pardon me, between December 16th and January 1st for us.
Hi, Ms. Reynolds, it's if there are citizen petitions that have financial bearing, that'll be part of your review as well.
Okay. Let's hope there aren't any, right, Carmen?
Well, in fact, now I'm recalling that I was supposed to say in my Chair's remarks that, you know, by tradition, but also under the current circumstances, we do discourage other business during special town meeting that can't be logically deferred until annual town meeting. Now, citizens have the right to submit petition articles, as do others, but to submit their articles. But we hope to create a focused, short-term meeting, especially given the current COVID circumstances and the requirement we have to held it in person in the middle of the winter. So.
When does the warrant close?
Well, we have to vote that in a few minutes, but it will
Matt, I think it's still prudent for us to set a date for the Select Board public hearing. We can always cancel it, but in case something did come forward that we need to include in a public hearing, it would be better to have a date in this final calendar.
Oh, well, sure, we need that date. It's just that, should it be earlier? I think, why don't we just go with December 16th, if the FinCom's comfortable?
It's a Thursday. So maybe a select, I'm talking about a separate Select Board public hearing date, that in case there's something that doesn't have financial piece to it.
Okay, because this was, I thought the idea was a joint public hearing. So we would just do it at the same time.
But wouldn't we? Okay. And then when would we have our discussion subsequent to that?
Yeah. Probably that next Monday.
Okay.
Carmen and Chris, does this make sense to you?
Okay, we need, the 16th, it's, December is very crowded for us, because we're doing our final guidelines that month. So the evening of the 16th, we'll be discussing our final guidelines issuance. So that was the best, the other two meetings, I have both the town and the schools coming in with their budget proposals. And I don't want to do a hearing on that night. So the 16th is the only date I've got in December that makes sense for me to have a hearing.
Carmen and Christopher, Carmody, does?
It sounds fine to me. I think if, as long as the Finance Committee is comfortable that it will be able to do whatever sort of Finance Committee report it will be issuing in time to get it to the printer by January 1st, or pretty soon thereafter, that should leave enough time for it to get back from the printer and for it to get mailed to households, so that we all know that the mail is getting slower. So we want to leave a little bit of time for it to get to households in advance of the 20th. But that seems fine to me. And I will note on the citizen petition issue that for special town meeting, we do need, citizens will need 100 signatures rather than the usual 10 to place a petition on the special town meeting warrant. But we won't know until the warrant closes exactly what's on the warrant.
Okay. All right, then, the only other open question, I think, is around the snow dates and whether, have we already voted the change of the special election date, or do we need to do that as well at this moment?
You, the Select Board has voted February 2nd, so you'll need to change the date to February 3rd.
Okay, can we do that just as a part of adopting the calendar? Or do we need a separate vote for that?
I believe you can adopt the calendar.
Okay. And then finally, the snow date. So this proposed date of January 27th, 2022, for the special town meeting. Everybody on board with that? So not hearing any objections. I think that we're ready for a motion on this.
Okay. Move to set the town's special election to fill this, oh, wait a minute, sorry. Move to approve the special town meeting calendar isn't as amended in the meeting materials.
As amended during our discussion.
As amended during our discussion.
With, yeah, with a joint public hearing, with the Finance Committee. Henry, I believe you have a voice filter problem again. Yeah, it sounds like you have a voice filter problem.
Henry, you're gonna need to leave the meeting and rejoin the meeting. You have a voice issue.
So so again, we'll allow that member to rejoin. But I believe, you know, in our motion, yeah, it's the joint public hearing with Finance Committee and Select Board of December 16th. We don't need a formal date for the report to the printer, but the special town meeting snow date of January 27th, 2022, and a change of the special town election date to February 3rd, 2022, from February 2nd. Those were the items we discussed.
Do you need a second?
Yeah, I think that would be good. I'll second if you'd rather not.
No, I did.
Okay.
Oh.
All right, I'm still hoping that Henry can join. I believe he had something he wanted to say.
He's
Oh, here he is, he's back.
Back again. What motion do we have in front of us at this point?
The motion is to approve the special town meeting calendar as amended this evening. And I did give a rundown of the newer revised dates, which was the joint public hearing with the Finance Committee and Select Board on December 16th, the special town meeting snow date of January 27th, and the special town election of February 3rd, rather than February 2nd, which is what we previously had had.
Yeah, my, I'm not sure what I missed, but my comment on this situation was that I, my rather strong personal feeling is that before we set a definite date for the special town meeting for the financing, which is going to be primarily for the financing of the middle school, we should have a much better idea of what the Building Committee and the School Committee are planning to propose at that town meeting. And that's my comment, and I will vote with the majority of the Board, but I want to express that feeling that we need a lot more information about what's gonna be coming forward at that time before we make a final decision on when to hold the meeting. That's
Yes, and actually indeed, Henry, more information will be forthcoming. Estimators, professional estimators are working now based upon the scope of the schematic design that was finalized. And so we will then get their professional estimates, and those would be the basis of the discussion.
Yeah, I understand that that would be part of the discussion that would take place at the meeting. But I think that still, I'm uncomfortable even scheduling a meeting before we have that information. But I don't, I think I'm in the minority on that, on that question.
Yeah, I think that time is money. In this case, if we delay, then we then further delay the project, and then that by itself increases the cost due to escalation factors.
Well, what I'm not, what is not clear to me is how a vote on the bonding affects the financing of the construction design. And, and so that's really the issue that concerns me, is that if we're gonna be voting, if the reason we're gonna be voting in February on the, on the middle school, on the financing of the middle school, and the reason for doing it then is that we need money to finance the construction design, I don't know how that connects to the bonding of the construction of the project. And even if we need to meet in February to fund the design, it still seems to me premature to vote on the bonding. And but if my, if my view on that is unique, I'm willing to accept that.
Okay. Yes, Stephen?
Yeah, just to, Henry, it's a good point to make, because it, what the vote really is, is an authorization for bonding. And so there'll be ways to finance the design with short-term borrowing and, you know, bond anticipation notes and things like that. So the bonding may not actually happen for some period of time after the, if the exclusion vote is approved at town meeting and then at the ballot. That, those votes are, like I said, just authorizations. The bonding comes sometime after, you know, timed with the design process and bidding.
Well, if, once the bonding is authorized, it's authorized. And so if the, if in fact the funding for the construction design is available for, from short-term borrowing, why, why do we have to really hold the, hold that whole process hostage to the design funding when we have the ability to fund the design from short-term borrowing without approving the bonding before we have considered not only what the total cost and what the amount of the authorization is going to be, but what measures the School Committee is gonna take to deal with the impact of the, the impact on the financing that is gonna have on the tax burden of the town's residents. So if we need to pay for the funding of the design, let's just deal with the funding of the design, and let's borrow the money we need to borrow to do that. But I still think before we have more information on the the impact of the cost and how we're going to deal with the funding, and how we're gonna deal with the impact on the effect on the tax rate, it's premature to take a vote on issuance or authorization of the bonds.
Well, I believe that in our public hearing and at the special town meeting, those points would be further discussed when we have those numbers in hand. And the idea of creating a calendar for the special town meeting is to enable that discussion to take place.
Yes, I understand that. I understand that. But I think that I think we probably have the ability, have somewhat more influence over the process if we don't hold the meeting until we have more information, rather than have the discussion take place in the context of, of the hearings on the hearings on the meeting itself.
I believe that the information will affect the tone and the outcome of the discussion. So it, you know.
Mr. Johnson? I'm sorry, so the Select Board has already voted on the date of the special town meeting. This, this calendar is the lead-up for public information leading up to that date. So, you know, the
Though, yeah, okay.
But that's always subject to change.
I mean, I just wondered, but we are changing the date of the election by a day in this. So we do have a motion on the table and a second. If there aren't further remarks, I think we should take a vote. If there aren't further remarks, I think we should take a vote.
Ms. Escobedo?
Aye.
Mr. Dane?
No.
Mr. Johnson?
Aye.
And myself, Ms. Bates, aye.
Thank you. Okay, so now we need to open the special town warrant and also define the date where that closes. Those are both noted in the calendar at this point. So if you look at our now adopted calendar, the town warrant opens as of tonight. And then it will close November fourth at four P M.
Move to open the special town meeting warrant on October twenty-fifth, two thousand and twenty-one at seven P M. And to close the warrant on November four, two thousand and twenty-one at four P M.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Please call the roll. Clerk?
Ms. Escobedo?
Aye.
Mr. Dane?
Aye.
Mr. Johnson?
Aye.
Myself, Ms. Bates, aye.
Okay, and then the next thing that we need to do is to set a special town election, a town special election date to fill a school committee vacancy. So we recently had the resignation and it's concluded in the packet of Fatima Mezdad. And so, and we also have a email from Cynthia Rainey asking us to set the date for a special election to fill that seat. And so we need to set that date. And I think we very conveniently already have an election date that we can include this matter on.
Move to set the town's special election to fill the school committee vacancy on February third, two thousand and twenty-two.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Clerk, please call the roll.
Ms. Escobedo?
Aye.
Mr. Dane?
Aye.
Mr. Johnson?
Aye.
Myself, Ms. Bates, aye.
Thanks very much. Okay, so now we're ready to go to the next item, which is to consider the revised charge of the Bruce Freeman Rail Trail Advisory Committee. And there really are two different things that we want to discuss. The, the first is just the narrow issue of the number and distribution of members. And so for that, I would like to invite, I, I hope Nat Welch is here to describe the background for this and so that we can work on that matter. And then we'll get to the other matter, which is to revise the charge to deal with the Junction Park access and, and any conflicts in that area. So Nat, are you available to speak? I think I see you. Co-chair Bruce Freeman Rail Trail. Except for I, I don't, there we go. Looks like you're unmuted.
I am unmuted. Mr. Chair, rest of the select board. Thank you for having us here. That this, the background of this request to the select board is that our current membership charge, which is dated nine nineteen oh five, amended January twenty-three, two thousand and six. This charge is on, on the Bruce Freeman Rail Trail website. The membership, the Bruce Freeman Rail Trail Committee should be comprised of nine residents of the town appointed by the Board of Selectment, each for staggered three-year terms. The membership shall be as follows: one representative of the Friends of the Bruce Freeman Rail Trail, one member to represent the interests of the butters to the rail trail, one member knowledgeable in the area of facilities management, such as current or past members of the Public Works Commission, and one member knowledgeable in facilities design and development, such as member or past member of the planning board, and five citizens at large. Given that the trail is nearing its hundred percent design phase, pardon, pardon my bird clock in the background, given that the, um, the trail is, is near its hundred percent design phase, the last piece, the last half mile in Concord, we're, we're working through the details. We, we felt that we no longer need to have a member of the Public Works Commission or someone in facilities design and development and wanted to increase the diversity of the committee and allow citizens representing, for example, the disabilities committee or, or others to join our committee. So we are asking to remove the two members specific to Public Works and Facilities Design and make them just two citi-, two citizens at large. Is that a good enough explanation? Can I answer any questions?
I, I think that that's a good explanation. Yeah. Are there any comments or questions from the board? Yes, Linda.
So, um, in, in one thought I had is one, I, well, one question I have is, has this been discussed with Marcia Rasmussen, who is a staff to this committee? So that was one question I had. And then the other comment I would make is that, as I look at the cross-town interest we've had in this particular issue and how we've approached some of our other committees, sometimes we've named, for example, that the committee membership include a representative from. And in this case, I would propose that maybe from Commission of Disabilities would be one representative that could fill that slot. Another committee might be the West Concord Advisory Committee, a representative from there who might also fill at least one of the membership spots. So I'll stop there just as a way to initiate the conversation on this. But thank you for bringing this forward for, for our discussion and our attention and for also being willing to take this agenda item on.
So let's see, I don't believe I, we have discussed it with Marcia. Perhaps we should. I know she's on the call, so I would ask her to, to share her thinking on it. We were just trying to streamline and, and open up the, you know, to, to more citizens. With regard to specific committees, I think I'll speak personally. That, um, and a butter certainly makes, makes sense because it is, you know, those are the people who sit right by the trail all the time. The second, the Friends of the Bruce Freeman Rail Trail were the instigators, for lack of a better term. I could probably use a better term, catalyst for this, Barbara and all the folks over at, at the Friends. And I think having them, you know, named is, is, is important. With regard to the other committees, I think one of the things that I was wrestling with is, well, if we pick one, why shouldn't we pick another? Should we pick another? So our thinking was sort of contemporary diversity at the time, as things are, as things are happening, we, we, you know, we, we look for citizens who, who meet those criteria. I will, we serve at the, at the grace and, and by the grace of the select board, so I will leave it to the select board to decide what makes the most sense. But that was our, our thinking.
Thank you.
So I have a question, which is about, do you have existing liaison relationships with the West Concord Advisory Committee?
Yes, we do.
Or the D E I Commission? I mean, I just wonder if, if liaison is an appropriate way to interact rather than perhaps full membership, which maybe would reduce the number of, of folks that have time to really focus on these issues.
Yes, we have liaisons. I'm trying to quickly be responsive and pull up the, the list that, that we keep for who the liaisons are. And right now we have liaisons to White Pond, the Trails Committee, the Transportation Advisory Committee, which I think is being reconstituted, the Commission on Disability, Junction Village Open Space Task Force. And we also attend the chair meeting.
Okay, thanks.
And, but, but that, what we, what we ask our, our members to do is that, that they're, they are there so that the Bruce Freeman Rail Trail Advisory Committee as a whole can stay current with the work of the other committees, what their big issues are. You know, the liaison is not required to attend every meeting, but they, we do ask that they look at every agenda. And we've had a lot of activity, you know, recently, a while ago with the Trails Committee and then with the Junction, with the West Concord Advisory Committee. So I think it is a way for us to keep flexible. You know, we've thought about, should we have a liaison to the school committee because, you know, safe bike, safe rides to school is, is becoming a very popular program. And many, many people use the trails for that. Sustainability and natural resources might be one that we could do a liaison to because, you know, we are about sustainability and, and alternate transport. So, that's, I'll, I'll stop. I'm kind of rambling. Sorry.
Thanks. Linda?
So I guess my question would be, are there other committees that have a liaison to your committee as opposed to you having liaisons to their committees?
We have, and our guest gentleman from the select board who, who keeps an eye on us. But no, no, right now we, we don't, we don't have any that I'm aware of anyone who said we'd like to, like to liaise. And we would certainly welcome that because, you know, the, while we are a fixed asset in the town, I think we, we cut across a lot of, a lot of different areas of interest. And, and certainly my objective, personal objective as chair is to be a space where conversations and ideas can flow. We can have difficult conversations if that's, if that's necessary, but we can have the conversation that we need as a community around this asset that the select board has asked us to look over, watch over.
Thank you.
Yes, Ms. Bates?
I have a related, not a direct question, but earlier on, there was discussion about changing the number of members in the committee, but I don't, you're not proposing that tonight. Is that correct?
That's correct. And again, we serve at your whim, so if you want to lower the number, then that's your, that's your call. But I like, you know, we've worked to increase the diversity, trying to get some younger members. Not that folks my age are, are, you know, are, aren't important. We are. We've added some, some, you know, we, we, we've, we've diversified in terms of gender. We're, we're looking to get other diversity into the group, walkers, not just bicyclists. People with disabilities because, you know, the trail is used by, by everyone. And I think over the next year or two, we're going to have some interesting issues to work through. I, I don't even, I don't even like to mention it, but e-bikes is an issue that's really going to come into the fore. And we're, we're going to have to think about what's our recommendations to the town with regard to that. And I think having a rich, diverse set of, of members is what helps us to do the best thinking we can for the town.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so if that takes care of comments or questions from the board, I have been asked and have agreed to allow comment for this agenda item and the next one from the public. So if there's someone from the public that would like to speak, please do your raised hand button. And we will recognize you.
I see Nancy Crowley. Nancy, if you want to go ahead?
I will. Thank you very much. My name is Nancy Crowley. I live at Five Concord Green. I'm a former executive director of Concord Park Assist the Living, Wichita Butts Junction Park. So I'm very familiar with the area. I'm also a member of the West Concord Green Thumbs. And also a member of the Green Thumbs. There are a few of us that assist to the Concord Public Works in designing the park. It was back in two thousand and nine until two thousand and thirteen. So right now you can see that there are some members of the Green Thumbs, as well as many Concord residents who are very concerned about the safety at Junction Park, which is now part of the Bruce Freeman Rail Trail. We're equally concerned for the safety of those operating the wheeled vehicle, as well as we are for the pedestrians of all ages and mobility. Skateboards are as much of a challenge for the public safety as bikes. And we just mentioned e-bikes, and that is another thing that is coming along. The offer of the Bruce Freeman Rail Trail Advisory Committee to work with stakeholders to provide a safe passage for all when the bridge, bike bridge across Route Two will be completed is extremely thoughtful and a timely one. And I believe that I speak for all when I say with a sincere thank you to them and really strongly urge the select board to accept this offer. We expect the consulting uses and reviewing possibilities and having a final place by summer, two thousand and two, is really not likely to be possible. So we expect that the advisory committee may need to make this a two-step process. That is a temporary plan when the bridges opens and followed by a design and installation of a finished plan as soon as possible.
Ms. Crowley?
Yes.
Are you speaking to the question of the membership on, on the rail trail committee? Or are you speaking to the Junction Park Safety Improvements?
Junction Park Safety Improvement.
Okay, that's the next agenda item. I'm sorry to interrupt you. Yeah, this, this is the first half of this, which, and, and hold that thought. I think all of us will remember what you have said so far, and we will come back to you when we get to that next item. Sorry to interrupt. Does anyone else have a, a, a point or question to ask about the committee makeup? The membership of the committee that is proposed to be changed through the memo, by the way, that's included in the packet. It's on page thirty-seven of the packet and it's the memo from Nathaniel Welch dated October tenth, two thousand and twenty-one, that outlines the current specifications for the members. And then the charge wording change that would change the, the distribution of members. Anyone else? Chris?
Gene Goldsberry has your hand up.
Okay, thanks very much. Ms. Goldberry? Goldsberry?
Hi, Gene Goldsberry, eighteen thirty-two Main Street. And I am also the chair of the Concord Commission on Disabilities. The, the commission has been very interested in working with the Bruce Freeman Rail Trail. And we've had, had the, the liaisons come to our meetings a couple of times, which has been really helpful for us in sort of discovering what, what concerns and issues there are. I, I won't speak now to the safety at Junction Park, but that's one issue. There, there have been some other kinds of things that, that we've worked collaboratively with the rail trail group. I think having a permanent member from the commission on the Bruce Freeman Rail Trail Advisory Committee would be a huge benefit to the advisory committee as well as to people with disabilities in Concord who, who need to be able to access the trail in many kinds of ways.
I guess the question to you as the chair is, do you believe that you have a member that would be available and willing to serve on both committees?
Yes, we do. I spoke with a member this morning who, who would be interested.
So now back to Mr. Welsh. I guess the question is, does this change your thinking about this? Or does, do, do you feel that you should defer to us? Or I, you know, I, you already said you'd defer, but I'm just curious what your view is.
I think, I think the, the select board has a responsibility to figure out what's the right way to make up a committee and think across, across it. You know, Gene and, and her committee have done great work. We'd be happy to, to, to welcome someone on board if the select board feels it's, it's the, the kind of assignment that should be made permanent. And, you know, I, I, look, I, I think that we have work to do. And whoever is, is on the committee as a member, we're trying to get them to do the work that the town has asked us to do. So I don't think my, my personal feelings about this really, you know, impinge on. I think it's up to the select board to say, this is a good policy and this is what we should do. So.
Okay, a- any more comments or questions from the public before I go back to the select board for that consultation? Okay, so back to the board. The question is for you all, do you think that we should accept that amendment to add a member of the D E I Commission and then reduce the number of citizens at large from seven to six? Any, like a straw poll? Linda? Susan? Henry, what do you think?
So Matt, you said D E I, you meant.
I mean, sorry. Commission on Disability, that's the other commission that I've been working with lately. Yes, sorry. Commission on Disability, not the D E I Commission. Yeah.
You know, obviously I think that's important to do, and I guess I would just broaden it to say Commission on Disabilities or designate that they. to say, uh, Commission on Disabilities or designee that they would make.
Okay, that's, that makes sense.
Yeah.
I think that, I, can I just come, I'm sorry, I think that actually makes a lot of sense because that frees up, um, the DOC to not necessarily give up or, you know, involve a member with two meetings every, you know, every month, so, okay.
I agree. I think that's a good solution.
Okay, then.
And the number, Matt?
So what I would suggest then, that, uh, the new charge would read under Section B membership, the Bruce Freeman Rail Trail Committee should be comprised of nine residents of the town appointed by the Board of Select for staggered three-year terms. Membership shall be as follows, one representative of the Friends of the Bruce Freeman Rail Trail, one member to represent the interest of the Butters to the rail trail, one member or designee of the Commission on Disability and six citizens at large. Uh, I move, so, I move that. I know the chair's not supposed to move, but hey, I, since I just said it, I am.
Second.
Okay, would the clerk please call the roll?
Ms. Escobedo?
Aye.
Mr. Dane?
Aye.
Mr. Johnson?
Aye.
And myself, Ms. Bates?
Aye.
Okay, thanks very much. And now we will get back to the other matter, uh, related to the Bruce Freeman Rail Trail Committee, and that is the discussion of, of the, the idea of the committee taking on, uh, the project of looking at, um, safety and also uses, uh, within the Junction Park, um, where there have been some conflicts among users, uh, due to the intersection of the rail trail and park. So, um, now back to our committee members, first of all, I think to, uh, Mr. Welch to describe the proposal and, uh, also what you're looking for from us, uh, in order to take that on, uh, formally and, and then we will have discussion among ourselves and then the public.
Mr. Chairman, um, I have not prepared remarks, uh, for this. I, I think when we had conversations with, um, the select board about this question, um, what, what is really driving us is safety, right? That, um, you know, I recently, most of the members recently joined the committee. Junction Park was already in place. It has a long history, um, uh, that, as to how it got to where it is. Uh, there are clearly, um, issues and concerns about safety and the separation of pedestrians from other wheeled vehicles, whether that they be bicycles, skateboards, roller, rollerblades or, uh, people in wheelchairs or whatever. But clearly in that small space, less than seventy feet wide, like smaller than that because the path is, is thinner, there are quite a few people going back and forth through there. Dory Keo and I sat, um, uh, last week just, just chatting there and we counted, you know, a whole bunch of people who rode their bikes through, adults, children, et cetera. We saw a couple who walked, uh, but it's, it's, so it is an issue. And, uh, last, earlier this year, um, the, uh, the, the committee suggested the Transportation Advisory Committee take a look at it and come up with this, with a, with a solution. And what, uh, you know, kind of to sum it up, essentially it's put more signs, we'll try and figure out how to, how to market so people get off their bikes, so the pedestrians are aware of what's going on. The, the genesis for the idea was, we really need a long-term solution. The bridge is coming, there are issues right now. Ms. Crowley, I think we'll speak about some of the, uh, of the details, but, uh, the town needs to figure out how to make a permanent solution there, where there is separation and safety between bicyclists and, um, and, and others who use the park and others who just sit there and enjoy the park. So our thought was, we've dealt with NOTTY, K-N-O-T-T-Y, issues before as a committee to help the town with various components of, of the rail trail. And the chair, the co-chair, myself and the other members all feel that, uh, we have a responsibility and a desire to, um, help the town have that conversation. And there, you know, there are a whole variety of stakeholders and we're ready to step up and say, um, if the town would like us to do, uh, you know, come up with a conceptual idea, and I, I'll, I'll explain why in a second, as to how to make the, the Junction Park, uh, safer, which is, which is the primary goal, uh, we can come up with a, with a conceptual idea. The reason for a conceptual idea is we can do the brainstorming with the stakeholders, we can come up with some idea, you know, with some thoughts, um, some, some rough ideas and then come back to the town and say, this seems like the best one. Now can we have engineering, uh, and, and others kind of step up and, and, and take it from there? But, but dealing with the broader issues of, well, you know, what actually happens to what's already there? Where, where do we move things, you know? What are the challenges? How do the Green Thumbs feel versus the skateboarders, right? And so, so all of these groups should have a chance to speak. What are the, what are the commercial interests in West Concord feel about how the park is used and, and safety? So we thought we could offer that space for that conversation. Uh, and, and our request to the board would be that it be a smart request in the sense of it's specific, it's measurable, it's attainable by us, it's, it's, uh, realistic and timed out. And the idea of a conceptual, um, uh, approach means that we've kind of dealt with the broader issues, but we haven't worked out the nits and grits. You know, the conceptual idea to be, would be to build a bridge from the Assabett River over the parking lot all the way over to the Nesho Bridge. That's a conceptual idea that we probably won't come up with, but, but just a sense of, here's a way to tackle the problem.
It's been discussed, by the way.
Well, okay.
Ten years ago it was.
And I don't want anybody in planning or engineering or public works to get mad at me, not suggesting we do that, merely saying, the conceptual idea is not bringing in consultants and doing the detailed work, it's saying, here's a way we think we can, uh, the town could approach it and, and come back to the board and say, we've had these two or three ideas, these, the pros and cons, this is where people feel strongly, this is where we, this is where we'd advise a town to go. And the hope is that through those conversations with all the, all the stakeholders, we could work through the challenges and accept that some of us, us, you know, broadly may not get exactly what we want, but with the goal being safety and separation, that's where we're trying to get to. What is the best way to do that? What are the trade-offs we have to look at? And what can we come back to the town with in terms of a, of an idea for a conceptual design that addresses the long-term solutions? So that's the, that's the genesis.
All right, thanks, thanks so much. But I, I also, I guess, would imagine that, looking at the charge, you, you already kind of have the authority to look at that. I think we're, just as we are a select board, we'll, we'll give you the marching orders, but we don't need to modify the charge in order for you to take this on.
Yeah, I mean, I think that's, that's, I'm not, I'm not a legal specialist in charges. I defer to one of your, one of your corporate counsel.
There was broad language there about dealing with these kinds of issues.
I think there is. And I think the reason we wanted the select board to say, do it, is that we kind of handed this back up the, up the chain in spring of this year, the, the Transportation Advisory Committee, and we're still hearing, where are we going, what's going to happen? And so we're volunteering our time to, to take on, you know, the, the, this initial piece and I, and I, I said that, I, I say the long-term solution. I also think that if the, if the board's ready, then we should also have a conversation about what are some other things we can do in the short term? And I think Ms. Crowley and others will, will talk about that in the public session.
Uh, other questions or comments for the board before we move to the public? Yes, Mr. Dane?
Um, I, I've spent, uh, some time looking at the park myself and taking some pictures and, um, see that there are, uh, there are many issues there that involve not only the safety of the, um, less mobile pedestrians and users in the park, um, such as the signs that say, dismount from your bike, that are like one square foot, uh, in size and on a pole ten feet high, and issues that relate to the safety of the bicycle riders or the other people who are passing through where there is a highly designed crossing gate for the bicycles and yet there are two totally open, uh, crossing, pedestrian crossings, uh, across the tracks that need to be blocked off if you're going to provide safety for people, um, uh, who should not be walking across an unguarded, uh, crossing. There are two problems. One is the, um, the, um, coming up with a conceptual idea of how you coordinate these various competing activities and the other is getting the, uh, people in the, uh, town departments to implement those, um, those concepts. And I think that the, um, both of them have been a problem up to this point. I think that we need to, or I would suggest that we also insert something into this process that is going to create a sense of urgency about it. And that is we take affirmative steps to, um, ban or prevent wheeled vehicles from passing through Junction Park pending the resolution of the safety issues for all of the interests involved. If we do that, we will not only create an incentive to solve the problem and to implement the solutions, but we'll also be protecting the safety of the various users of the park, whether they be people who are pushing their baby carriages or sitting on the bench or are riding their bicycles through it. And so I feel that the, we need to finally do something that is definitive, uh, in terms of safety pending our, our, um, coming up with an appropriate solution.
But so are you suggesting banning people from walking their bikes through?
Oh, from riding.
Well, I mean, I believe that's already the case. It's against the regulations.
But it, right, but it, the, the police department has said they will not enforce it, and so there needs to be some actually physical, physical barrier and, and also signage, which is more, more prominent than a one square foot sign at the top of a ten-foot post behind a tree branch.
Well, I believe that that's the idea is to have an initiative to figure out what those better results would be, you know? And I guess also barriers, that's a difficult, uh, situation relative to those with disabilities. We don't want to prevent their access to the park.
That, that, we can deal with that with, uh, an appropriate maze, uh, that, and we, that can be, you can push a wheelchair through, but you can't ride a bicycle through.
Well, I, I do expect that, you know, all kinds of things will be, uh, discussed by, uh, the, the rail trail committee as they address this. Uh, but I mean, in the interim, it is already against the regulations to ride a bike there, I believe. Any other comments or questions from the, the board before, uh, we move to the public? Yes, Ms. Bates?
Um, yeah, thank you, Matt, for, uh, bringing this up and being willing to take it on. Um, and I think if there was an easy solution, it'd be already done, obviously, but, um, I, I'm wondering about, I think it's very important for all the stakeholders to be around the table as, as Matt suggests, and Green Thumbs, Commission on Disability, perhaps Council on Aging, um, anyone who has an interest in the park should have a voice in the process. My question is about when Henry suggests, um, cutting off the park to any bikes, um, what the legalities are, given that it's already, that it's, it's part of the, of the rail trail? Can we, can we negate that in some way or? That's what my, that's part of my question. And, um, it does seem to be a very small space for all those types of activities, so I think it would be challenging to come up with a, um, a solution. But regarding bikes, is there an alternative way for them to, is there a way for them to circumvent the park? And if, if that's possible, what does that entail? I mean, I think, um, those are all important things that need to be considered.
The town already owns or has, holds easements on all of the property over which the rail trail runs in that area. The, um, placing restrictions, um, on it, um, the, uh, the Department of Transportation has a veto power with regard to things that interfere with safety. And I assume that if the town, uh, administration confers with the Department of Transportation, um, they would agree to reasonable safety precautions and measures that we might take, especially even more stringent ones, um, pending, uh, the outcome of a long-term solution.
Um, any other members of the board, uh, at this point? Yes, Stephen?
Sure, uh, well, Linda, if you didn't have a comment, I was just gonna jump in. So we, we did spend a lot of time at this at the Transportation Advisory Committee, um, and took in a lot of feedback and if those who attended the meetings will recall, we did kind of explore all different kinds of concepts and ideas. We ended up taking the, um, I guess I would call them interim measures of the additional stenciling on the ground and additional signage, because we did agree that the, the markings were inadequate in how they existed. Uh, but we did talk about, you know, maulards and other things, and I think one of the, one piece of feedback we did get during the discussion was a reluctance to make modifications to Junction Park itself. And so we, I guess, when, when we looked at, um, you know, we ran out of runway on this issue in that, um, rerouting the park, rerouting the trail wasn't, didn't line up with the documents and the ownership and all the other things that, that created the trail going through Junction Park. And I think there was a reluctance to want to start, like I said, making physical changes to Junction Park. And that's why we wanted to try, you know, improving the, the signage and the markings to see how that would work. And I think where, where it was left was we, we did the installation and, um, we were going to monitor how it goes and if what I'm hearing others say is that, um, it doesn't look like it's having its intended effect of getting people to walk their wheels, then I do think that, it, then maybe we pull the lens back and really put things like making changes to Junction Park or rerouting the trail, um, back on the table, understanding that from a time and, and, um, money standpoint, that's going to, um, the, it's, the instant results will be hard to achieve with, with, with things like that.
But yeah, I think we, we know it's going to be a challenge, whatever happens. Mr. Welch, and then we'll move to the public.
Thank you. Uh, I, I do want to, uh, recognize that, um, town staff, um, everybody who's been involved, the Green Thumbs, uh, other, you know, earlier members of the committee, this has been a thorny issue, um, and it's, I think it's caused a lot of consternation in, in, in many places. I think one of the things that, that I personally want to bring to this is, what's happened has happened and we are where we are. And I think, uh, as Mr. Crane said, um, it's time to think about kind of, okay, what do we need? Now we need to do the right thing. We need to focus on safety. It, it will likely mean some changes to the park. And I think that having all the stakeholders to have conversations about that and say, I want this or I don't want that, or here's, here's what we can do, that's the place for that to happen. And then with the focus being, how do we make it safe and how do we separate the wheeled folks from the, from the others so that everyone can kind of get to or do what they need to do there? That's the objective. So the criteria for whatever we come up with is it's, it's long-term, it's permanent in, in quotes, and yes, it will take time and money, but by bringing something forth that all the stakeholders have had a chance to talk about, um, and, and recognize it's going to take some time to do that, um, I think we can get to a, to a great solution. I recognize our purview is within the bounds of the right of way. And where we don't have quote authority or it's not in our charge, all we can do is say, well, we thought about this, but it's really up to the town to decide, you know, whether they want to take this on or not. But, but I think, you know, let's not look back, let's not say, oh, we missed this opportunity or this went wrong or whatever. Let's look forward and say, what can we do with where we are, um, and, and creatively come up with a, with a long-term solution? Uh, recognizing that not only, you know, it's not only the bikers and the pedestrians and the Green Thumbs and the, you know, West Concord, uh, commercial interests, it's the town staff, it's, it's all of us in this community to try and figure this out, because when that bridge gets built and Sudbury does their piece, it's going to be an amazing piece of, 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 uh, transportation in, in our area that will be used by a lot of people and we can make it safe. But I do want to, I do want to note, But I do want to, I do want to note Mr. Dane's comment about the, the crossing that's wide open. I'm not clear if that's on our list or not, but we certainly will have an opinion about, about that, I think, when, when we come back to you, because that's a piece of, that's not on the rail trail, because the rail trail gets routed around that, but it's on the right of way. And so I think we should talk about that.
All right. So I'd like to now move to Ms. Crowley, who was rudely interrupted by someone earlier.
Thank you. Oh, by the way.
That's all right. What I will do is I am going to read just the last paragraph. I had started it. I'm going to start at the beginning of it. It's not the whole thing. So I just want to say, the offer of the Bruce Freeman Rail Trail Advisory Committee to work with stakeholders to provide a safe passage for all when the bike bridge across Route 2 will be completed is an extremely thoughtful and timely one. And I believe that I speak for all when I say a sincere thank you to them and strongly urge the select board to accept this offer, which I think you might have been talking about doing, if not have done. We expect that consulting users and reviewing possibilities and having a final solution by 2022, the summer, is really not going to happen. So we expect that maybe the advisory committee may need to make a two-step process that is a temporary plan for when the bridge opens, followed by the design and installation of a finished plan as soon as possible. It is most important that the cyclists that enter Junction Park by crossing over the rail trail, they know from the very beginning that cycling through Junction Park is not permitted. And I also want to say that the Green Thumbs are very ready and willing to help the advisory committee. We do ask the select board to approve the committee as quickly as possible so that all that love and use the special place would be protected. The goal of the park has always been to provide a safe and beautiful area for everyone to enjoy. We never want to find that the residents who have been enjoying it are intimidated now and don't want to be there because they are afraid for their safety. And it's such a beautiful place that it would be a shame if that ever happened. So personally, for me, born and brought up in West Concord, I love West Concord. I love this park, and so much work has been put into it. I just want to make sure that everybody can still enjoy it. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have other members of the public that have other things to add? Different points that they would like to make? Chris, do you see anyone?
I do not see anybody with their hand raised, no.
Okay, I think Ms. Crowley may have made a very comprehensive statement.
Thank you.
All right. Well, thanks, everyone, for that input. And now let's just back to my fellow board members. I don't think I've heard any hesitation about the Bruce Freeman Rail Trail taking this on. It sounds like there's strong public support. Any, any other remarks before we just say good, good luck?
Well, we've already thanked them for being willing to take this on. I guess I heard Nat ask for some specific guidelines in terms of not only what we expect them to accomplish, but also the timeline. And I don't know how reasonable it would be. We're already here at the end of October, but whether a report could come back to the select board early July?
I think that that makes sense, and especially in light of, I, I think it's also a reasonable idea that there might be short-term and long-term proposals. So it may even be sooner than that. I'm not sure what would be reasonable to ask. But I'd love to get a report back as soon as that they, they feel that it's feasible to do so. Because especially if funding will be required, those kinds of things, we really need to start getting that planned before, you know, until shovel can go on the ground to do something. Okay, Mr. Welch, one more time.
Just, just to add to the select board's deliberations, I think in the, in our, in our next meeting, we'll, we'll work on trying to come up with kind of an attack plan, as it were. But I would expect that on a regular basis with our liaison to the select board, if we're, if, you know, how we're making progress and if we're having challenges, we can certainly, you know, you'll certainly know that's going in the direction that we're heading it. So this is not going to be a black box process.
Okay, but let's give you a specific request that before the end of fiscal year, we have something.
You got a date? You got a date, Mr. Chair?
At the end of, end of June is the end of fiscal year.
Okay.
All right.
June 30th.
Okay. I think we're ready to proceed then. I don't think we need a vote on this matter. But thanks very much. And thanks, everyone in the community for all of your efforts in this area. I mean, I think we do have a commonly understood problem, and we do need to resolve it. And if we do, we'll have a beautiful result.
We will.
Okay.
Thank you. Thank you all.
All right.
Matt, let me ask one question. I, we had thought previous to this that this fell within the province of the transportation, the reformulated transportation committee. How is, how are the efforts of the Bruce Freeman Committee going to be coordinated with the Transportation Committee, or is that something of the past?
Well, there was already a sort of a handover and a handback, if you will, or a hand, you know. And so that's what we're doing now, is we're sort of handing back to the Bruce Freeman Rail Trail Committee, because I think we do want a fresh approach here. And it is also the case that the Transportation Advisory Committee is only just reforming at this point. So they're really, you know, staffed up on the Bruce Freeman Rail Trail Committee and able to, I think, give this some immediate attention.
Thank you.
Okay, so I think we might as well move forward. So the next agenda item, thanks, everyone, is to discuss, to prepare for our focused meeting that will be held on November 15th, that is talking about the envisioned Concord Plan and our progress against action items in that plan, as well as our, you know, our future plans to achieve completion of those items. And so just like every other board and committee in town, we need to do our homework here so that we can walk into that meeting on the 15th with our background information prepared. So there is information in your meeting materials that is outlining our, the key items that were assigned to us as a select board by that long-range plan. And so you can see, there's just a description of the overall highlights of the plan. But then if you see in the description of the big ideas that are in the plan and so on, but when you get to item on page 60, you start to see the items that were like the top 10, if you will, that were assigned to us. So you can see these are really defined by overall topic areas. And what I've done in preparation for tonight's discussion is I have prepared a little spreadsheet that just takes all of those actions by section goal. This follows the template that was given to the other board members, other boards and committees. And tonight, our objective is, to the degree that we can, to fill in what we, the status is, what we've done to date on each of these items, and then what our action plan is to get them completed. So the other thing that I've taken the liberty of doing is I've looked at our 2022 Select Board goals, and I've highlighted those items where we do have a goal in our 2022 goals that is aligned with these items. And then finally, if you look in our packet at pages, yeah, pages 68 through 71, these are items that were highlighted directly from the action framework, section five of the plan, and that a couple of them, this one, the adoption for the housing bank, and the one evaluating the impacts of petitioning for special legislation, both of these were not in the top 10, but they do have a select board as assigned as a, as the committee, acting committee. So you can see here, there are a total of 12 items that are assigned to us, just those 12. So it's still a lot for going through in a committee meeting. I can tell you that.
So Matt, thanks for doing that. The one thing I noted for some of these is that often it wasn't the select board in isolation that was asked to look at some of these. And I'm wondering if we need another little column that captures the other.
Well, and actually, Linda, I do expect that the other board and committees, when they submit their materials, they will probably have information related to that, and then we would hopefully consolidate with them. Yeah.
So you're right on that score. In some cases, however, the town manager or town manager's office was also aligned. And he, he's, there won't be a separate presentation for that department. I don't believe it.
Well, actually, no, this was sent out to town boards and committees. I mean, to, sorry, to town departments as well as boards and committees. So indeed.
Perhaps.
There is, yeah. There is a hope that we will get something from town departments. And in fact, there was a little email exchange that I saw today on that point relative to, with Wendy Raveli, about the light board versus the light plant in the same regard.
So this, the first one on this list, you know, also reminded me of the fact that there are other actors involved in this process.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Right. So, I mean, there's clearly some action here in this first item, right?
Right.
I mean, I don't even know if we want to just even call it complete at this point.
It's, yeah. So Matt, I think, if I could just jump in really quick on the town departments, I think it's going to depend a little bit on the departments and like in the boards and committees, they, that they, that they, staff that they support. And so I don't think you're going to get kind of a standardized response across all departments. It's going to be, you know, the planning board has a lot in envision Concord in terms of things that are theirs. And so, you know, Elizabeth Hughes, on behalf of DPLM, is coordinating, on behalf of Marsha, you know, kind of coordinated some of that. So I just want to manage expectations on, on what we're going to get, because not every town department has as much stuff assigned to it as others.
Yeah. I, I agree. It doesn't have to be every department, but like, planning is a pretty important one. And, yeah.
So Matt, on the comment you just inserted here, I would just add 2021 in 20, right? So we just have a. Yeah, good.
Okay. So should we go through the rest of this? So advocate for the adoption of Housing Bank through special legislation to create a real estate transfer fee? Guess what? We did that tonight, right?
So back up to number one, if I may, after, after you get done with that. Also, in 2020, I believe, and the town manager may want to correct me on this, the visitor's center was established. And that was part of this.
Well, also, the Beth was hired to be the manager, director of tourism.
Yeah, that was 2019.
Okay.
Because Beth and I started on the same day.
And then the Economic Vitality Committee was established.
Oh, yeah.
That was 2019 as well, wasn't it?
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay. And I think we should keep these brief, because, you know, there are going to be a couple hundred of them by the time we're done. Not all for us, but when you look across the whole plan. And so we don't want to make this another 300-page document.
No, but.
I agree, but I think those are major.
Those are all key items. I'm not criticizing what we've got there, but just that as we do them, we don't want to write whole paragraphs, I think. Advocate for the adoption, so we just, we just moved to support, we sent a letter of support.
Well, this has been a three, we, for three years, we've been, we've been providing testimony and letters of support for.
For special legislation. Let's see, so 2018, right?
2019, I think, Matt.
Okay. Statewide legislation.
So sending a single letter, I think, is.
I think you can take up the letter part.
We've sent, we've sent multiple letters, I guess.
Okay, sure.
It's an ongoing thing.
Okay. Shall we move to the next? Consider and support the recommendations from the Affordable Housing Funding Task Force.
So the complete 2021, I think we need to say it's in progress.
Yeah.
Okay. I mean, it's funny, because the way the actions are written, like, we have advocated.
Yeah.
But it's true, until it's actually passed. Okay.
So I think even 2021 is misleading there, in progress.
Actually, we don't need a date on in-progress items.
Yep.
I mean, we have supported the recommendations from the Affordable Housing Funding Task Force, which of course includes the item above, right?
Right.
Well, I think you created the trust, or town meeting created the trust.
Affordable Housing Trust.
And appointed, the select board appointed its members.
Okay.
And we've also sought state, sought to town meeting affordable housing appropriations. And I think in-progress is still appropriate.
Yeah. Okay. Evaluate the impacts of petitioning special legislation for local property tax incentive.
Sorry, Matt, it's three years, not two years, for the past three years.
Okay. Okay. So how about if I just say 2018 through 21?
2019 through 20.
Isn't it riveting to watch someone type?
Gives us time to think.
Yeah. Okay. Actually, I had this wrong about what the incentive was, that it was graduated income tax, sorry, property tax assessments on, on increased value of affordable housing developments. Developments with affordable housing component. And this is
So get rid of.
Special legislation that was for Amherst, the town of Amherst. Now, I am not aware of any action so far taken on this point, but when I was researching this, I did talk to David Carr, who's the chair of the Tax Fairness Committee, made him aware of this. And so now they're looking at it. But it's only just begun to, to, to look at this. I don't, you know, this was passed in 2017 for Amherst. And this, it, it's not something we've worked on. So I would actually call this on hold for the moment. And, and I would just say, next item is, action plan is the Tax Fairness Committee to investigate.
Yeah, that's good.
Yeah.
And then I think, you know, okay. Just you need to edit the, there's an extra of in front of developments.
Increased, oh, on increased value of.
There you go.
Okay.
Yep.
Okay, so we're, we've got four of them so far out of 12. Okay. Within the Climate Action Advisory Board Resilience Committee, create working net zero and net blue groups to guide policies. And I'm not aware that this specific action has been taken, but it would be an action for the CAB to take.
I mean, I think they, you know, we have written and adopted a climate action plan. You know, there's been, so I mean, a lot of things have happened on the climate action fronts, whether it's the climate action plan, miserable ability. So I, I think maybe not that specific outcome, but certainly a lot of movement in that direction.
Okay. Yeah, this is very specific. So we'll just say in progress, and I, I don't think that we really take the lead on this, though it is in that top 10 list. So I just wanted to note that. Okay.
And we did adopt at the 21 annual town meeting, the sustainability. What's the title of that? The.
A part, Article 30.
Yep.
The fossil fuel infrastructure.
Right, right. Which speaks to some of this.
Is it 2021? Yeah. Okay. So now.
Sorry. I said, I'd call this in progress because I do think the Transition Advisory Committee, both iterations are going, are, are working to do just that.
Was that formed in 2019 or 2020?
Think the charge may have been written in 20, late 2019, but I think it got started in 2020.
Okay, I'm going to give it 2020. Okay.
And if you look at the charge of the committee, it, it talks about doing exactly that.
Okay.
So in terms of the action plan, well, no, we don't need to say anything.
It just says town expertise.
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay. And prove coordination with regional partnerships for the purpose of reducing traffic volume from commuter through traffic and regional ecosystems planning.
I guess I would call, I would call that on hold because we did the Volpe Center study, which was a pretty significant, you know, effort on this. The study did get complete, but it was written. The data is pre-COVID and it was written in COVID during the pandemic. And I think we're all trying to figure out what those new patterns are going to really look like.
How about a sponsored Volpe Center study?
Participated in.
Okay. On regional transportation.
Uh, yeah.
Reasonable. Participated Volpe Center study on regional transportation, but COVID impact on traffic patterns, but the place to work on hold.
I think that, that's where, where things are, yeah.
Okay.
And so then the other, the other major thing I think there is that, and Stephen may have another take on this, that we've provided feedback on the two-way improvement plan.
Roots to a improvement plan?
Yeah.
But that's a commuter cut through traffic. Well, I guess regional ecosystem.
The, we did, sorry, we did, we did a complete date in 2018 or 19. I think in 2019, we did complete the cut through study.
Yeah.
Okay. Oh, okay. Well.
I, I should say more than provided feedback. We, 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 we are now named as a consulting partner for the Route 2A Improvement Project.
Okay. Um, so question is, I mean, it's on hold, but really the scope of this almost seems like we've, we've really done it. Evaluate the cost effectiveness of new or complete redevelopment of town buildings and/or infrastructure, a new middle school or integrated town services building. And I believe that's in progress. We created a capital, right? I mean, capital.
First completed the facilities plan.
Yeah, right. That was 2019, right?
That was 2020, I think.
Okay.
Renovated townhouse, 2021.
Capital Planning Task Force convened and implemented recommendations for capital planning process. 20, the Capital Planning Task Force was 2019, 2020, right?
Uh, I think, yeah. Yeah.
Yeah.
Through, through 2021.
So the other, the only other thing that I think we haven't captured there, you, you put an apostrophe instead of a one.
Okay.
The, is that other, other town buildings were renovated and were reconfigured.
Well, we've got this townhouse here. And I'd just say in other buildings.
Yeah, in other buildings.
And put 2021, 2020 through 2021, probably.
Yeah.
Okay.
And then there's this other project that's referenced there in that action plan that we've heard something about.
Oh, you mean the.
Oh, yeah, I knew that rang a bell.
Yeah, okay.
And that started in 2019.
Right.
The committee was established in 2019.
Okay. Yep. Quite a lot. Okay. Assess the capacity of town social services programs to meet the needs of town population, of the town population and identify funding. Now, I seem to recall this as being in some past select board goals, but I could not find it in this year's. And I think that maybe we thought that it was other departments and or committees that should take the lead. I'm not sure what to say here.
So the CEO had their staff, CEOs, the Council on Aging's capacity, staff capacity was increased. So that was one part of what got done. And I thought the SMT had, or part of the SMT had done their own assessment of needs, but I don't know.
When was the capacity increased?
Last, this budget year, I guess.
Okay.
I mean, I think this is one, to be honest, that's, that is, especially with council and aging and social work has really been impacted by the pandemic.
Yeah.
So what we would have done normally, I think has been, we, we had to completely adapt and change how we, how we provided certain social services. So I think in the, in, and I only mention it because in the context, I, I mean, I was here when Vision Conquer was, was adopted. But in the context in which that statement was written versus what we've actually done over the last couple of years, you know, it's, the pandemic has a significant impact.
Yeah, I just don't know if we want to say on hold because it's not like we're not doing anything, if anything, doing more.
Right.
Yeah.
I, I, I think the Council on Aging has this, that's one of the items that they have on their list to evaluate and it actually applied for a grant from Emerson for mental health through the next, for $190,000. This is breaking news, but I'll cover my, my liaison report, but the three items for that included, okay, assess social service needs. And that's, that's a big, that it's on their list, but they're struggling in how, you know, how, that's a very broad mandate. So it's in discussion. But on the other hand, they did apply for this almost $200,000 grant from Emerson.
Okay.
So maybe the, maybe the first bullet in this section is really to capture that there was townwide response to COVID.
Yeah, coordinated townwide response.
That may be the only place in our update where we actually acknowledge COVID happened. Okay.
I, I think that's true. Well, that we had one up here with the transportation that we identified. Okay, I think that's good for that one. How about cybersecurity planning and reinforced information technology infrastructure? I mean, that clearly the town has done some work in that area and with training, so. So Stephen, I don't know what you, how you would like to phrase this, but I think this one.
I mean, there's a lot. We've done a lot of work there. In fact, we, we're, we're going to get an award from the state for having such a high rate of participation in a cybersecurity training thing that we got, that was grant funded. You know, we did the conversion of 365. We've, I mean, I could probably get some feedback from, from Jason Bulger and populate that.
Okay.
But we've done, we've done a lot.
And implemented systems, I guess. And upgraded cybersecurity systems.
Yeah.
And that training was, was quite comprehensive, I thought. The employee, the employee, the training that we all took along with the town employees.
Okay, we're down to our last two. Create one town task force to review the charter, charge and mandate of all the town committees, board and task forces to identify synergies and overlap to make recommendations to the select board regarding potential streamlining of town government. And I think, you know, we can just discuss that we've taken sort of an alternative approach, right?
And not and.
Okay.
Possible synergies.
Sorry?
Possible synergies.
Yeah. Streamline processes and membership criteria or revised, revised membership criteria or something like that.
Yeah.
Okay. 2021. I think we should kind of say this is in progress.
Progress or did we finish?
Okay, we, I think we could say completed, but I think it's in progress because at least, you know, some of the changes, we, we haven't, for example, changed APP 10 yet, you know, that, that Terry was going to propose some language. Also, I took that action item to talk with the sustainability committees in town. I, I think we can call it in progress.
Yeah, I agree.
So is that, so do we want to call out the APP 10 review under action?
Well, that's the membership criteria I thought here.
Okay. Okay.
I could just say, actually, APP 10 belongs before streamlined. Let's see that. Okay. Strategy to anticipate acquisition of properties currently owned by federal, state or other entities within Conquer's boundaries as they become available or declared surplus using an integrated planning process, integrated analysis across town departments. Examples include 2229 Main Street, MCI Properties and others. I think we can also call this in progress. We can say that we had the NMI Starment Task Force recommendations, right? So let's see.
And the, um, the state land where they're building the, the Junction Park Affordable Housing. That was state land. Oh, never mind. That was already given to the.
That was already, yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
And we, we voted to express interest in the Armory.
Yeah. There to accept their final report.
And land use recommendations.
Thank you. And that, that task force was, was that convened in 2019?
Yes.
Okay, voted to, what, voted for a letter to expose, express interest?
Sorry, Matt, it was 2020.
Oh, wow. They, they whipped that out, boy. That was quick. Okay. That was intense work. Sorry. So Henry, how would we phrase this about the Armory? We.
Voted to, voted to send letter expressing interest in.
Letter of interest.
The National Guard Armory in Concord.
And the housing groups have been looking at a list of municipal properties that might be used. that might be used for affordable housing. So I don't know.
Okay, I'll let them say that.
Okay. I can't remember if it came to us or not, but.
Well, I think that we've got good input to the November fifteenth meeting.
We've done a great job.
Okay, and we are just five minutes over. So that brings me to, I believe it's committee nominations and appointments. So to the clerk.
Hey. Nominations. Annabelle Posture of 139 Jenny Dugan Road, Alexander Fernandez of 1400 Lowell Road and Molly Wireman of six Nathan Pap Drive, Nathan Pratt Drive to the Diversity Equity and Inclusion Commission for terms ending April 30th, 2022. Pa Richmond of 144 Nushova Road, G Orloff of I can't read the number 34 East Circle and Robert Monroe of 1400 Lowell Road to the Diversity Equity and Inclusion Commission for terms ending April 30th, 2023. And Andrea Fonsarada of 41 Commonwealth Ave, Rose Crassley of 79 Hill Press Road and Jimmy Twofeathers of 303 Commonwealth Ave to the Diversity Equity and Inclusion Commission for terms ending April 30th, 2024. Stephen Verrell of 415 Wheeler Road is the Agricultural Committee representative to the Pollinator Health Advisory Committee for a term to expire April 30th, 2024. For Hannah Y Sheets of 69 Riverside Ave to the Tax Fairness Committee for a term to expire April 30th, 2024.
Hey, thank you for those. And now to the appointments.
Move to appoint Kathleen Fasser of 46 Arrowhead Road, Michelle Cardinal of 95 Hubbard Street, Dan Schreger of 24 Mallard Drive, Laura Davis of 330 Garfield Road, Norman Abbott of 97 Mildred Circle, Phil Posner of 223 Lausbrook Road and Nick Pappas of 1743 Monument Street to the Transportation Advisory Committee for terms to expire on April 30th, 2024.
Second.
Okay, could the clerk please call the roll?
Ms. Escobedo.
Aye.
Mr. Dane.
Aye.
Mr. Johnson.
Aye.
And myself, Ms. Bates, aye.
Thanks so much for that. Now, well.
Excuse me, Matt, before we move on, how many appointments do we have left for the DEI?
That's the full slate.
That is the entire slate?
Yep, nine people.
Thank you.
Well, they were all not just nominated tonight, just to be clear. But yes, they will be appointed at our next meeting, November eighth.
Right, thank you.
Liaison reports. Yes, Susan.
Started off, this first item is not a liaison, but it's a I I wanted to let people know the Chamber of Commerce met this morning and had their annual awarding recognition of of it's sometimes called Business of the Year, Business Person of the Year. This year, it's the it's a recognition of the Concord Healthcare Community due to their heroic efforts in the during COVID. I attended the Council on Aging and they had a COVID Pfizer COVID Booster Clinic on October 13th. And there's another one on October 28th, which is this Thursday. They had excess capacity for the 20, they didn't have, they had excess capacity on the 13th. So for the 28th, they've invited actor, acting seniors to sign up as well. Someone asked about Moderna and obviously we, that's a, that's something in process, but they will, they would will not do clinics that involve two vaccines. It'll do a clinic on one, on just one. So that will, the Moderna will be determined. There is a fluke clinic on the 14th. Walgreens spot or was involved in it and they gave 126 shots. The seat, the staff was recertified for CPR that expired during COVID and they didn't have, you know, couldn't touch anybody, so they couldn't do it. They've hired two new van drivers. Now here's a grant, Emerson is building, is making a very significant capital investment and part of the their legal requirement is to provide a percentage of that, whatever that number is in funds to the community. Oh, and and so it's the grant, the 190,000 is over the next three years is for mental health support. It's a three community grant, Maynard, Concord and Carlisle, which Ginger wrote. And it's supports groups one per town weekly. The grants will be decided by the end of November and the grant period begins in January. They also talked about or the cost of senior services. There are a lot of people who need at home care, can't get it because there's a waiting list and also the cost is high. They've asked the state for increase in rates because private care is about $35 an hour and home care rates from the state are significantly below that. The other commission meeting was Commission on Disability. And they talked about what, you know, wanting to make be involved in the what we discussed tonight about first about Junction Park. And they were hoping for a conversation at the town level about transportation for disabled. And they their their point was the COA has vans, but that's that's COA. And they they are wondering about a conversation that would address how how they can get some transportation for disabled as well. And I brought up the ride exists, I believe, but I don't know how widely it's used. And they're working on their response to envision conquered. And then that's it. Then that's it for me.
Okay, thanks so much. Who's next? I think I saw Henry raise his hand.
Yeah, I attended a meeting, a special meeting in the Library Committee and a number of other committees that I made contact with. You'll be happy to know that they're taking quite seriously a request that they respond to our questionnaire about the envisioned study. So I think we will get some good responses on that. The the Board of Registars, I think we had our direct contact with our joint meeting with them over the redistricting. And so I think we know, we know what's going on with them. There's, the problem is that the town will be for the first time, at least within recent memory, divided into more than one legislative district. So the town will have more than one member of the lower house representing us. And we did have a an online meeting with the Board of Registars and the Select Board with with Senator Barrett and Representative Guevara, who did their best to explain why it was happening, but did not offer very much hope or give us much hope of any advocacy on their part that we, that there, the outcome might be any different. The Board of Registars and the town clerk are working hard to to create precincts within the town that meet all of the legal requirements and also fit within the legislative districts so that we don't have one precinct, which is in more than one legislative district, which will cause all kinds of administrative problems. I attended a very interesting meeting of the Board of Health where the major issue was the request of Deborah Stark on behalf of the the what do they call it, the gourmet, what is it, the creative gourmet?
Natural gourmet.
Natural gourmet to allow her customers to use their own, their own containers to buy bulk foods from the from the store. And she had originally had run into a difficulty because the director had problems with the state health code. She asked, Ms. Stark asked for variants to allow that in her store. And she was granted that variance with the, by the Board of Health. And I assume that other, other merchants who have similar, who have similar desires to sell bulk foods to customers in their own containers and observe the same hygienic conditions that she observes will also be able to obtain similar similar variances from the Board of Health. Finally, on behalf of Terry, who is out of the country for this meeting, who she is the liaison to the the Joint Dispatch Center or REC with ACT and for emergency response services. She asked me to report that the original documentation for that committee is now, is now under review by Town Council for some administrative and institutional issues that will come before the board in the near future that will require some changes to the documentation under which that organization operates. And and she cautions that it would be inappropriate for that, for that body to enter into any binding commitments for the engagement of personnel, in particular a project manager or an executive director pending the completion of that review and our approval of the revised agreement.
Thanks, Mr. Dane, Ms. Escobedo.
Okay. I attended the CPC meeting where they're continuing with their interviews of the applicants. And they this time heard from the Asabet River Pedestrian Bridge Construction Drawings and Permitting from the Town of Concord, from the REC Facility Strategic Plan from the Town of Concord and Recreation Department for the Treatment and Prevention of Sinovirus Bacteria Blooms in White Pond from the White Pond Advisory Committee and for Staff and Technical Services. And I, as I am always, I am continued with the, to be impressed with the level of questions and interaction they have with the applicants. I also met with the Town of Concord Junction Village Open Space Task Force. They did a debriefing after the public forum that was held, including a subsequent conversation that had was held with Delia Kay, who had made some very specific comments at the public forum that I think caught the task force by surprise. But that was a very productive meeting and they now are have gone back to their consultant to restructure. Some of them are based on the feedback that both Delia and the public provided. I'm not, I would point out that, point out that the historic commission is revi- revitalizing the historic commission coffees in an effort to bring together all interested citizens and parties in town who are interested in preserving the historic aspects of our town. And that meeting is going to be at eight o'clock on October 28th, at eight o'clock in the morning and all are invited. And the agenda is on the town website. The Concord Municipal Affordable Housing Trust met and I think, believe this was their third meeting. Among several of the agenda items included their first discussion of the housing goals because they will be developing policy goals and statements that they will bring before the select board for their approval and which will be the basis for making funding awards for various applications that come to their attention. And some joint meetings with the housing groups are anticipated, including the November eighth Housing Roundtable. This year, Concord is the host of community or chairs and hosts the Hansk Marya Towns Committee, otherwise known as HATS. Their speaker this time was David Lutzenheiser, who is the Senior Transportation Director for MAPC. And he came out and spoke about the Connected Greenways and Trails Network Plan and Vision and talked about some of the local initiatives and some of the design features in terms of safe streets architecture and and mapping and and lining that are best practices. So that was helpful. And I think that's the highlights.
Okay. For myself, just wanted to report that the Tax Fairness Committee, as you heard, we just have a new member coming on and that they are still actually looking for an additional member. But they are also taking a step back now and having a fresh look at what other kinds of initiatives, you know, could be used to further improve the equitability of taxes in town. I think that, you know, they have pursued for some time this, that, you know, the local option income tax thing and found that there were constitutionality issues. They, of course, are interested in in these other matters that are before the legislature now. But the, I I think they also want to take a fresh look at other kinds of proposals. And so they're going to take advantage of having new members to to kind of restart that discussion. The next was unfortunately, the Climate Action Advisory Board at the last minute was unable to produce a quorum, so they were not able to meet. And even more unfortunately, the Comprehensive Sustainability and Energy Committee was unable to meet because of a technical problem with Zoom. There, there were four meetings going on concurrently at the same time Thursday night. And apparently our license does not allow each of those IDs to be used more than twice at one time. So they were locked out of starting a Zoom conference. So they are going to meet in person this coming Wednesday at the Harvey Wheeler Center and to to recover from that. And that's all I have for this time. So now moving to miscellaneous correspondence, I wanted to acknowledge there's a letter in the packet from Alan Quackenbush. I also would now move to look at anyone who has a public comment to make. So anyone who has public comment, please indicate through your raised hand feature and we'll recognize you. Does anyone see, anyone seeking public comment to make a public comment? I do not. Okay, so at this point, then we're going to need to change to executive session because if we were an open meeting, that would have a detrimental effect on the negotiating position of the town for a real estate matter. So we're going to consider the purchase, exchange, lease or value of real property. So would the clerk please make a motion to adjourn? You're on mute, Susan.
Sorry. Move to adjourn to executive session, not to return to open session to consider the purchase, exchange, lease or value of real property if the chair declares that an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the negotiating position of the town.
And I do so declare. Do we have a second? Any, anyone seconding?
Second.
Thank you. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Ms. Escobedo.
Aye.
Mr. Dane.
Aye.
Mr. Johnson.
Aye.
Myself, Ms. Bates, aye.
Okay, thank you to everyone.
Could the town manager please send me the link?
Okay, we'll now be adjourning to special to executive session and we will not be returning to public session. Thank you very much. Okay, we'll now be adjourning to special, uh, to executive session and we will not be returning to public session. Thank you very much.